Greenfield Middle School, Oak Ridge United Methodist Church, now Oak Ridge Methodist Church, Northern Gilbert High School, SRA, PTA, YMCA, you name it. I'm there, I'm all about the kids, I'm all about the next generation who is going to be our leaders, or who are going to be our leaders. And currently, I have four years of experience. I have, I can't tell you the learning curve, it is like this. And what I can bring to the table now, if I don't know the answer, I will find you the answer. And I am not scared to call an attorney, I am not scared to call a lobbyist, I am not scared to call whoever I think is going to get me the answer that I want for my citizens. The past two years, I'm Mayor Pro Tem. And I am going to change that title, I am Mayor Pro T-H-E-M, Mayor Pro Them.
Are they going to, I like what you're going to send them out with. Are they going to still be able to write, read and write, curse it?
Yes, in fact, before they hit on their computer, they have to write it so I can read it.
Alright, okay. Alright, Mr. Plank, I got you down now, Mr. Plank.
No problem. Lee, I think, I think it's important to have a diverse council with new ideas, new blood, that really kind of reflects the town and the turnover that we've had, just, you know, some of the new people coming in. Personally, my background, I have an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, a master's degree in this administration. I have varying healthcare certifications and diplomas. My professional career has been in healthcare medicine for over 20 years, or actually for 25 years. But the past 20 years, I've been in some form of business development, mostly in management. Lee, I've managed budgets, processes, people, having 200 direct reports and responsible for thousands of lives. If we think that, and it is, we think the local government regulation is challenging, trial healthcare medicine, it's extremely complicated. And I've been regulatory compliance, in fact, I've been an inspector for compliance for eight years. Perhaps a different way to look at this question is what would disqualify me? I don't have any special interest groups backing me, I don't have a business in town, I don't have a large property or development, I have absolutely no conflict of interest whatsoever. I'm a homeowner. And I'm invested in this town, not being a percent of the hundreds, but, you know, they say wherever you are is your home, this is my home. My family, a little bit about my family, I probably have a few more seconds. I have three kids, they've all went through Summerfield Elementary, Northern Middle, Northern High School, praise God, they've gone through college, or one has, either. They're our empty nesters, and I love this town, and I'm willing to preserve this community. Well, that's my lovely wife of 30.
We're three years right there.
You married up, didn't you?
First of all, thank you all, all for coming out, listening to us and get to know all the candidates, we appreciate it. I have lived here 28 years with my husband. We, what brought us to Greensboro, both my husband and I got out of the Marine Corps. I served seven years, I was a sergeant, I was in logistics, which drove me into the job that I'm currently in and other jobs, I've been in real estate, relocation, I worked as a daycare at 12-years-old. So my family, they did hard work, so I was out doing stuff, my dad thought we had a farm with our own two-acre land, so I run a court for my dad, so I give him credit. But Don and I have lived here for 28 years, we have a household of strawberry bread. I always wanted to own a business, and it was never the timing that got me to go. One day, he just made it happen, and I got into relocation company, I started it out of my house. I had 10 clients and grew it systematically, went into an apartment as an office, went into a second, two-bedroom apartment as my second office, went into a 5,000-square-foot warehouse as my third office, went into a 20,000-square-foot warehouse as my fourth office, and then I'm in a 32,000-square-foot warehouse. And I not only did one company, I grew it into two companies, so I have three companies now that are, that my proceeds exceed $10 million a year, we're all profitable. I have no debt, no loans, no mortgages, anything that we own. So that shows that I can run a company, I can run a business, I know what financials are, and I understand it. So my background in the Marine Corps is logistics, I know how to manage things, I know how to search out stuff, I'm good at organization, I have common sense, I know how to lead people. I call my employees my team, we're a team. And that's what the town council would be with myself as the leader. We would be a team and we would work together. So I have 12 employees, we have a crew of different things that we do, we serve all over North Carolina and go different ways. I'm working with lots of different international companies as my clients that are coming into North Carolina. So I know that I can lead, and I know that I could be the mayor, and I would appreciate your vote for Linda, for mayor.
Very nice, thank you. Mayor Cecil.
Thank you, Lee. First, I'd like to say a thank you to Pam and all the ladies of the Northwest Republican Women for hosting us here tonight. The very first Northwest Republican Women's meeting happened at my house. It was in January of 2014, and they didn't have anywhere else to meet. Brenda was there and came to my house, and just so happened that that morning, my wife had a test done, and we found out that she had cancer. We had canceled that meeting, we had Northwest Republican Women there that night. And my daughters served everybody. And so, I grew up in Rayford, North Carolina, my dad had a fourth grade education, my mom had a high school education. My dad and mom opened a plumy heritage business, which I worked in all my teenage years and thought that was the only thing I would ever do, because I loved that, I loved to work with people, collaborating. But my dad wouldn't have that, he made me go to school. And I ended up finally graduating from UNCG, where just a couple of months ago, I was appointed back to the Board of Trustees for the school where I was fortunate enough to graduate from. So very appreciative of that, but spent over 20 years in ministry in a lot of different churches. I'm licensed ordained, used to lead a music program at Beers Chapel United Methodist for almost 18 years there. I still do weddings, I still do funerals, many of those a year. I've also spent many years in the school system, also outside of the school system, coaching. I started out coaching rec soccer. I'd never played soccer growing up, soccer didn't exist in Hope County where I grew up, but my daughter wanted to play, and so we played rec soccer. Then I was the head coach of a challenge soccer team, then I got moved to the head coach of a classic soccer team, and I ended up coaching high school soccer for about eight years, six of those as a head coach of the girls' soccer team at Caldwell Academy where we won a state championship. I will add, the only state championship in soccer that's ever been had there, boys or girls. Kind of like the Miami Dolphins, we're holding out on that. But also coached football, coached football, assistant coach, never a head coach, but assistant coach for football, I've coached high school softball. Also, I guess 3.5 of that would be, I have a business, I started a business in 1988, and I did it for two and a half years, it failed miserably, and I just about lost everything I had. Heather and I went through some dark days during those times. But 1994, I started a business, me and one other person, and that business today employs almost 600 people in six different countries, we make over 102 payrolls a year. And I truly believe until you make a payroll, you don't, you don't know what it's like to be in business and have to make a payroll and be responsible for five, 600 families. But I've been doing that for 30 years this year. I'm in my 30th year, we'll celebrate that in January, I mean in June of 2024, we have the celebration of the 30 years in business. I have spent, I was first elected as mayor of Summerfield in November of 2013, and started serving in December of that year. And over the course of that time, so that is my experience. I've been doing this job for a long time. And as you said earlier, you're exactly right, I don't think anybody up here wants to be dealing with this. I'm not sure, well, Linda, I mean, if I was Linda, I'd go, no, no. But, you know, we've engaged in this, I'm getting a little bit up in years old, as I make my kids say, I'm not old, I'm old earth. But, you know, I signed back on to do this again because I'm not going to run from this fight. I'm committed to representing the citizens of Summerfield, we've done that successfully, and we've held everything at bay for a long time. But when you look at the situation now, the risk far outweigh the reward of letting this thing go to a vote in the General Assembly. And so, I say, I say the best thing for last of everything I've ever accomplished, I'm most proud of.
Tammy, she's standing here for a reason.
Heather and I, Heather and I have been married for 40 years, this coming year, we have seven kids, I have 15 grandkids, all my kids live within 20 minutes of the house, we get together every week. And that's the thing I'm most proud of, of everything I've ever done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I do want to get this question in before the end of it. Somebody made a comment a little while ago that somewhere down the road, this is all going to be over. And it will be, all things must pass, sometimes you gotta quote your chairs. And y'all have put the incumbents here, have put the town hall on the back burner. We have a little sort of between seven and eight million in reserves, from what I understand. We've got lawsuits coming up. Is the, I guess let's start in the middle there, let's start with, I'll tell you what, Lynn, let's start with you. Because I know you were for the town hall.
I'd be happy to speak about that.
Yeah, we're going to start with you, are you still for the town hall? How much are you willing to spend on it? Are you willing to draw down our reserves from seven, eight million? Are you willing to raise taxes to pay for this? I mean, when all this is over, are we going to revisit the town hall? I mean, what's your proposal?
The new town hall was my passion.
I know it was.
I did a full-blown presentation, got a little pushback from that, and I'm like, no, I'm doing that presentation. And within two weeks of doing that presentation, or prior to that presentation, I had $44,000 in pledges for different aspects to be paid for, for that town hall. Am I for it now? No, I'm not, this is not the time to do that. At that time, based on, I'm going to revert back for just a second, at that time, based on building prices, it would have cost us $3.5 million. It cost $3.5 million, and I had $44,000 in pledges, and I had the support of a lot of people. The actual development, looking into that, grew too long and too painful, and then with COVID, everything was gah-ha. Am I for it now? No, I'm not. That is not what the town needs, that is not what the town needs to be spending its fund balance on. Is it going to be revisited? Who knows, it depends on what the next council wants, or possibly even the council after the next council. I think in here in the near future, our money needs, we need to sock it away, we need to be able to pay for the attorneys that we're going to have to have for the potential upcoming lawsuits, attorneys to navigate through the zoning and the development agreement that are the next steps with this text amendment. And then if there's a DNX action, who knows what kind of money for attorneys to save.
Time.
Thank you.
Ms. Pam, let's go to that one.
So, the question is, town hall, do I support getting a new town hall? No, I do not, I'm actually on the finance committee, I was appointed to the finance committee, I've only been to several meetings since I've been appointed, I think May was my first time. Since then, they've worked on the capital improvement, sorry, capital policy. CIB, sorry, I'm getting a little tongue-tied here. And at the time, it was put on there for $8 million or more to be spent on that one. That's what we have in our reserves, so it'd be all common. And I actually had to argue quite heavily to get that offered there. And I'm a little worried because there are some things that are taken off of those policies, taken off of the budgets, and they're like raising taxes, those are taken off this year, most likely because this is an election year. So I'm worried the next year, you're going to have your taxes raised anyway. We had a deficit for operating costs, so our operating costs exceeded what we're bringing in. So we had a $68,000 deficit there, we were over $1 million on a deficit there as well. We had to get those from the fund reserves. And I believe that Reese Walker, Davis, and Tim, who are all on the council now, all voted to dip into those funds, pay for it. If you go back, I think it was maybe September, October of 2019, I believe Reese Walker said something to the effect of, you'll never dip into the funds to keep the lights on, that's not what we all did. Well, folks, that's what we do. So we've got a lot of projects, a lot of things that we're just trying to run away. We've got to be really careful. And I'm nervous about that because the CIB, what's going to happen is, once this is over, I believe the town manager is very much interested in putting it back on there. And you're going to see it creep back onto the books. And then, once another election happens, it'll come off again. So next year, I anticipate your taxes being raised, and I anticipate that this is put back on the books. I questioned heavily, actually at the finance meeting, I questioned heavily at the finance meeting, how much it would cost for us actually to have Loughlin? Nobody knew. I had to keep asking the question, I asked the question, I said, well, how much will it cost? Is there any way, that's a big one, can I go on to that?
For how long, I mean?
A minute, a minute.
Just real quick, some months.
I asked how much it would be, well, we don't know. I said, but it's too much, yes, it's too much, how much is too much? Well, we don't know how much is too much. Finally, it came out that it was going to be several million to get it up to par. Well, several million versus eight to 10 million for a new place, gosh, it's a no-brainer, that's the better, that's the better choice. But then again, we're already operating in a place where we don't have the money to pay our bills, we're dipping into our funds.
Thank you.
Definitely not in favor of your town hall. I think that is the least of all words out here right now, with everything we've got coming up. What's going to happen with the text amendment and everything, it's just, I don't think it's way back.
What about when it's all over? What about when this is going to be, somewhere down the road, it's going to be a dream. There, it's going to be a bad dream. When it's all said and done, couch is happy, we're happy, and we're miserable and he's happy.
Luckily, I can't predict the future, I don't know what will happen in the future. You know, a lot of things could happen, a lot of things could change, things could go great, things could go bad. So I really don't know. I also would like to hear a little bit more about maybe Loughlin. I thought, if I remember correctly, that we got like two of these plus from the county, Ford's Loughlin, the first was added. I think it'd be a great thing to go forward with for now. Mary, do you like saying the future, I'm not sure what will happen.
Lee, may I, may I just jump on to his $2 million?
Wait, wait.
That money that we thought could have been for Loughlin, you can't break it out because it was designated for water, so how's it going with water?
Got you, got you. Just water.
Without my crystal ball, no, I'm not in favor of building a town hall. Ms. Devaney is very persuasive, so we worked that project out, and she made good points. I went to Loughlin Primary School, it's an amazing school. I hate to say that building, by the way. I'm not in favor of purchasing that building tomorrow and fixing up that couple of million-dollar figure, but I would be in favor of purchasing the building so that the county can sell it to the next developer, whoever else. So a strategic acquisition. I think Loughlin would make an amazing town hall.
Just talk about that. No, I, you know, coming on a year ago, they'd already decided to put the town hall on hold, but frankly, I never was for it either. I've been a proponent of Loughlin, and I think these guys will tell you that I've been, let's get Loughlin, let's look at it. My daughter went there for her first year when we came here, and I love the school, I think there's a lot of history there. I think long-term, when this is over, we can work something out with Gilbert County Schools to get that. You know, there's a lot of history there, not only for Summerfield, but even before. It would make a great town hall, and I actually think it would be a great community center. You know, ball field, basketball, library, I mean, there's a lot of things you could do for that benefit of the town. So that's my opinion.
New town hall? No, I like the idea of Loughlin, also, you've got the, like you said, the basketball trail, you know, playground out back. It was a kid's kindergarten through second grade school. And I actually went there also. And so, it's going to take millions of dollars, millions of dollars to do it. Again, we can take that $6.6 million, and we can buy Loughlin, fix it up. Or we could still buy, take that $6.6 billion and build a bridge for safety over Strawberry Road. And, how many times, because I never got to answer the DNX question.
But I had to make one statement.
Two.
Just one point, if you don't look at our complaint, it certainly has in there that we need to honor Loughlin and protect it, I just want to point that out. It's in the, it's in the Summerfield. I'm going to have a yes or no on DNX, it's going to be yes or no.
Well, then, town hall, geez, lady.
Hang on, whoa, whoa, hang on. Mayor Cecil? Town hall? Yes or no?
I can certainly speak to that. I started trying to get Loughlin in 2014, when I became the mayor, and have always pursued that as a chosen option. I had some options worked out with the county that would have provided some of that funding that could have gone toward Loughlin, but the decision was made to stick it, stick in it with water for fire protection, instead of doing that. I was committed to doing that, I think a fair price for us to look at, because we do need a town hall, would be somewhere between $2 and $3 billion, part of that we would finance, part of that we would pay for to be able to get a town hall. You know, I'm not answering questions just to get elected, I'm telling you like it is. And so, wouldn't have advised any more than that coming out of capital fund balance. And to that end, I lowered taxes when I became the mayor in 2014, and the taxes that go toward Summerfield have never been increased since then. So that's been 10 years, almost 10 years now, that our taxes have never been increased from Summerfield, so.
Can I move to that end?
And, but you are, but you are for a new town hall?
We, well, I am for a town hall.
Okay, for our town hall, yeah.
Yeah, but the timing has to be right, and I was committed to sticking around as mayor until we could raise the funds, because it is going to be an expensive project. We couldn't answer the question, because when we identified the cost, we called the project off.
Ms. Wendell?
I'm against building a new town hall.
What about the Loughlin?
That's, I was going to get to that. So I'm against a new town hall, I don't think we need to spend $8 million. I was at the finance committee when that was discussed, and they tabled it to put it back on budget for next year. My goal, and I went and did a little mini tour at Loughlin, it is a great school, it is a great building, we don't have to use it all, we can negotiate with Gilbert County to get it. It's already usable, I've gotten to see the space, there's great rooms, great areas in there that we can make it not only at town hall, it could be a community center for the basketball court to go in and have homeschool parents go in there and have games and activities. Put the Summerfield Recreation back there, there's a track, we can have food court nights in there, have events where families can come in there. The rooms can be made into a library, a garden room, a history room. Get the garden club to come out there and help decorate and plant gardens, and make it a center where it belongs to the town, and they can participate and own that, just like several people, Reese and the others, and Theresa, they went to that school. My daughter didn't, because when we came here, she was already in like first grade. But make it a tent, make it an area of building that's the town's building, not a big fancy building, we don't need that, we need a community building.
Ms. Plank?
Lee, my friend, I can tell you want me to go fast.
Pam goes.
Yeah, we're low government here in this area. Do we want a multimillion-dollar town hall is what you're asking? No, and I agree with Lynn, now is not the, now is not the right time. I agree with several of the other candidates here that says, let's repurpose the school. Do we really need another, town hall, what is a town hall? It's a bunch of offices. There must have been a million dollars for offices in the building, I've been in the building, it's not a bad building. We're in this community center right now, we're not maxed out. So let's, let's use the funds appropriately at the right time, and like my hometown did, when the school came available for a town hall, and was all overused, we repurposed it and returned it to a community center, other meeting rooms, other play areas for the kids, so that's for us.
When we have the funds to do it, what for?
And I have your plan already. And I have your plan already, all those points, sorry, Lynn.
I guess this might be the last question. One of the people in this room was really concerned about transparency, and she didn't think that the town had been transparent at all with anything to do with the couch or basically in general. For the people that are incumbents and the people that are wanting to be incumbent, what would you do about people that want to know what's going on in government? How would you make sure that they know what you're up to? Just basically transparency in general, I mean, that's, it's always going to be a problem with, with elected officials. You know, the state just took away a bunch of those, well, I won't get into that. But how would you make sure that y'all will be as transparent as possible, disseminating information to the general, up to the town, to the people of Summerfield? Theresa, you want to go first?
Oh, I'd love to.
Okay.
Transparency is a top concern. I want a transparent government, open and honest, without secrets. Transparency is adhering to the open meetings law. Evidently, that's not being done. Too many emails giving that quote "pole" or quote "thumbs up." I questioned the emergency meetings on March 4th and September 18th of this year, if they should have been in the open. The town attorney should have addressed this with a capsule so they understand what they can and cannot do. Transparency is only possible by the removal of all current capsule members. Too much taxpayer money has been wasted on dead-end projects with no one taking responsibility. Transparency in government, a mandate which must be honored. March 12th through 18th was National Sunshine Week, an annual week that highlights the importance of citizens' ability to participate in their government. Unfortunately, citizens on the town sunshine mess, and I'm lucky I know there is a town sunshine mess that does keep you updated, have not been receiving information either at all or in a timely manner. And David Chandler said this in a following 2016 blog. Transparency in government is essential to upholding American democracy. When citizens have access to behind-received information about local and federal administrations, politicians are held accountable. The public is educated and engaged, and our nation is strengthened. It is free national access to information keeps Americans educated and ensures that our political leaders are transparent. An annual national incentive that encourages openness in government and the free flow of information to the public. It is worth reflecting on the role information plays in strengthening our democracy. America can only be a strong nation when its citizens are engaged and informed.
Alright, let me ask a question. Would y'all be willing to do, all y'all up there answered, if you're going to be, would be willing when you get in office or re-elected, to do town halls during the year? Maybe two or three town halls during the year, where people can come in and ask you questions?
I would bother.
Why didn't you do that in your own, or didn't you suggest it?
I did.
You did?
But it was, it was kind of hard, I couldn't really ask for anything when I was in office, because it was four to one, four to one, four to one.
Mr. Davis?
So I believe, actually, I'm doing that, maybe not in public forum, my number's out there. I've talked to many people, before I got on board, as far as the planning board, I've talked to people during the council, I've talked to a lot of people after the Thursday night, some who aren't against. So I'm going to talk to any- So I'm willing to talk to anybody. And with that being said, I understand the concerns. I believe that the town has worked really hard. You go look at our website. I did that based on your question. And I'll pick on specifically this development that we're all concerned about. There's from March all the way through September twenty-eighth, I believe, is just day to day to day where we made public comments. Plus on top of what the mayor's done and his particular news cast and broadcasting statements. So I think we are trying, obviously with any negotiations, some things have to be held close. And I'll be frank about it, sometimes some of the stuff that we think are held close is already on Facebook before I know it. So things are getting out. But I'm willing to talk to anybody anytime. I think government should be open. I'm an open book. What you see is what you get. And you have my number, give me a call.
Through forums and town halls as well?
I mean, if that's what's needed. I personally like one-on-ones. That's just my style.
I like talking to people and having a dialogue.
Like educating people.
Mr. Walker?
So I'll try to answer it. So the town halls, the forums that you asked about, I think the town hosts one of those every month, about the second Tuesday. And folks have our picture come to speak. Our emails are out there, our phone calls are out there. Get to that point, talk to a ton of people. I do, when we run for office, I do like getting out and talking to folks and I wish we could do that more. But it's really hard because when it's not election, sometimes people don't care. It's a sad, it's a sad reality, but that is a reality. So if someone ever asks us to come to a neighborhood, I know back during one of the text amendment process, several neighbors asked council members to come and speak to them. And I think the town council took turns going and speaking. So we didn't have too many people to break the rules, that sort of thing. But we are open. We're here to serve. I am, I think, I think the incumbent or in that phrase. And, and you know, we can, if I got a here up, here up and said, hey, I wanna have a forum, I could just host one myself. I don't have to have the town council tell me I can or can't.
Have you?
I have not, outside of, outside of being invited to come and speak. We've done that several times.
Well, are you willing to move the public comments back in five minutes?
I feel like.
I'll move it to three.
We did move it to three and a lot of that was in the effort to allow more people to speak.